Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:06 on December 4th, 2017. Thank you Area 50 for filming tonight. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to be acknowledged or scheduled at this time? Okay, seeing none. In our packet are the minutes for November 6th, 2017, both regular and executive session. At this time, we need to approve...
Motion to accept.
The regular minutes, okay.
Whatever you're holding up.
Hold the paper.
Aye.
And we need to accept and hold the executive session minutes.
Motion to do that.
Okay. Hold the paper.
Aye.
Warrens, I think we finished already, so we're doing good there. Can I make your way back to Christine already? Right, sorry. That's where everything is what I'm looking for.
Yep.
School committee correspondence and reports, I don't have anything to do with, excuse me. Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay. Unfinished business. You here?
I'm thinking.
Okay. So we had a member of our... I thought it was on somewhere else. So we had a member of our committee, Kim Sisone, resign. And so we will have a vacancy. So I've spoken with Lori and Charlie Seeley in MASC to try to figure out what the best way to move forward was and legally how to move forward. Excuse me, and as a committee, we can... Is there water in there?
Yes, sit down, bring your...
Thank you. As a committee, we can appoint... Us and the selectmen can appoint someone to fill the seat until the town elections in May. And so I kind of went ahead and chaired and thought that that would be the best thing to do considering we're going into budget season. And, um, you know, there's like five, six meetings left until town elections. And we're still in the middle of negotiations and things like that. So I just kind of wanted to see how you guys feel about that because, I mean, yes, I can make that decision, but it's also up to us as a committee to vote whether or not we want to fill that vacant seat with the selectmen. So how do you feel about it?
So we have to set the meeting and just get the selectmen.
Okay, so the way it works is Charlie posted the position as it was a vacant seat. We'll leave it open for a couple of weeks and anyone who's interested in applying will submit or express their interest to Charlie, Seeley, the town administrator. And then this committee and the board of selectmen will sit down and review applicants. And then we will decide and vote, both our committees, to who will fill the seat.
Where's he posted?
It's been posted. He wrote me an email, told me exactly where it was posted, and I can tell you.
And you know they put it...
They put it on the...
...town hall that nobody reads?
Both the board and town hall. It's on the Facebook Locals page, newspaper, fire station board. It's been on an email list.
Challenge the whole...
You got it in an email?
Yeah.
The Global Town News email that I signed up for on the website.
Okay.
Yeah.
So every spot that they post things Charlie posted everywhere.
Covered all bases.
Covered all bases.
Yep.
So that's the deal. So we haven't set a meeting yet, but just posted less than a week ago. So it should be open for about another week. I wanted to post it before this meeting, before the selectmen's meeting tomorrow. So people who are interested have an opportunity to either come here tonight and see our meeting or watch it on TV and go to this selectmen's meeting and express their interest if that's what they chose to do. If not, they don't have to attend the meeting, but either way, they need to have something in writing to Charlie. Do we put a date on it?
The 12th.
12th, I was going to say the 11th, so, okay, the 12th. So by this number 12.
So we can either write it or send it in?
Yeah, email Charlie Seeley, because email addresses on the town hall site. You know, if they can't find it, they can all contact one of us and we can forward it on. I mean, obviously, we're all open communication.
If we have the two members stop and have negotiations on the 12th and take them both down, we won't have to have a special meeting.
One more time?
We're meeting with the negotiators on the 12th. We could have the other two members come then and have them vote down.
Yeah, I guess it depends on what time they close. It would be at the end of the day?
I believe where we're at is that it's been posted and the school committee and the selectmen would hold a joint meeting with everyone that was available in attendance. And the people that have applied would be voted on that evening. So I assume it would be the next selectmen's meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
It's full, it's usually held that way. That's how we did it in Kingston. They usually meet on every Tuesday, so it would be the night of the 12th.
It would be that.
Yep.
And it's usually only at the...
Pardon me?
We could shoot over there after negotiations.
I'm hoping that it'll still be here at 7, but yes.
Yeah, it's later.
It could take that long, but...
That'll work.
So I first want to know if I have your support as a committee that I made the right decision. If not, we can pull the post, let's not like initiate.
Well, Charlie said that was the standard procedure.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, then that's what we'll do.
Okay. So somebody, one of us will be in touch and set a meeting time or whatever for the 12th.
So just that was a correspondence and then yours here, just getting you confused, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I just...
I know, I know there's no way.
Yeah, it was, I just meant the correspondence to Kingston. Oh, so you just didn't wrap them all?
You did, okay, perfect. Unfinished business. The only question I had on unfinished business, Kane, I apologize for not speaking with you earlier about this, but I didn't know if you had any update on the treasure hunt time capsule.
My 02 guy is Peter Venido Sr.
Okay.
Who was here in 1974. And he knows Jay and his sister. So he says he recalls road tilling the area out back and he remembers being there.
Okay.
He's our guy.
So we know where it is?
He seems to think it's back by the soccer field beyond the snack shack. There's like a little patch there.
Okay.
That's where he seems to think it is. Does anyone try metal detectors? No. That's where he seems to think it is.
Okay.
And then he recalls there was something else leading forward.
Oh, wait, Mr. B was talking about that, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's our guy. He recalls the event. He seems to be the only one that has any recollection. Because he said it was in 1976, right?
So, yeah. No, maybe '77, because it was coming up on 40 years, he said, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah, southeast '77.
So Peter Venido Sr. is the guy, he was here in '74, that was his first year.
So obviously, it's cold out now. Is this something we want to revisit this spring? Like, how do we want to proceed with this?
I have no idea. Does Jay have a plan to go up there?
I just emailed him back and told him...
Get out there.
I told her that we were talking about it and, you know, we were gonna... And he suggested, Mr. Venido. So it's funny that he'd be in the same day. Anyway, I just want to email him back and know, no way to forget about it.
Yeah.
It was the '77, '78 school year.
Okay.
So Mr. Venido is here, he recalls the event.
Okay. So maybe we can talk later about how we're gonna go about...
He needs to find a metal detector. Hopefully, they got some metal detector.
Or if there's a patch small enough.
He wasn't sure if it was, there were markings or not that he...
It's a long time.
We need to do a long time. That's how the foundation rains. I mean, we can reach up to town, see if they have metal detectors. I don't have them here, but I have more around.
Okay. Your dad at home?
Your dad at home.
Is he around, low? Okay, all right.
We can do some fuller bearing.
Scratch your fur.
Sure.
Okay.
But just get it, Jay. Just keep moving. And then we have someone on the internet, Mr. Venido, who recalls Jay and his sister.
Okay.
Does he recall how deep it was? I didn't get that far in. I was just looking for somebody to call the event. He's our guy.
Okay, all right. Making progress on the treasure hunt, I like it. We did new business with the school committee position. Future identified, does anybody have anything at this moment?
I was hoping to ask something. About an article in NBC News, serious cyber attacks in schools. It's happened in Montana, Iowa, Texas, Georgia, where the dark overlords come in and they hack it and they get the kids' information, social security, all that stuff. And they, like, really call it a storm. They try to get money from the schools.
They hold your data for ransom.
Yes, there you go, there you go. Oh, yes, exactly. And the FBI is asking schools to make cybersecurity a priority, yada, yada. And the other scary part was that they had access to these students' cameras. So it wasn't just getting information they were watching.
True.
They think that they're from out of the country. And they didn't give into them, but they didn't find that. Yeah, of course, Google, yeah, we'll have a little look, make sure the kids are safe. So I'm just hoping our IT people can look in to see what happened and make sure that where...
We happen to have our IT person here this evening.
To find out what... Like, I know we can't talk details, I wouldn't have seen them anyway because that onesies zeros is not my language. But just to make our people feel safe that our cameras aren't going to get tapped into and our kids' information isn't going to get hacked. So, did you hear about this? You sound like you...
Oh, yes, we've been hearing about it for a while. And I will say that we do take cybersecurity of our districts very, very seriously. This past summer, we upgraded all our firewalls, running the latest version of the operating system on the firewall. Make sure all our systems are patched and updated. Many of the attacks come in through email where a staff member might get something like, "Oh, you even got a B card from someone they don't recognize." And they click on it and it tries to download software onto their computer and then gets a backdoor into the system. We do lock down fairly tightly with our email system. So it does catch a lot of that long before it ever gets to the school. We do have our anti-matter system in place that can detect these systems. We are working within the filter of the company this year called Security. And we also manage to filter a lot of things that older systems may not account. Moving to a cloud-based system can be updated instantaneously with our protection system.
So the district will be protecting the ICOS district and protecting the non ICOS?
Well, our anti-matter system, we moved to a cloud-based system this summer. That means that has new definition come out, the sub-host, which is a company we use automatically, applies and is instantaneous instead of waiting for all our computers to download individually. It applies and updates pass-on seamlessly without having to leave our kids to look out.
And you feel like, so you feel like there's enough money in the budget for you to do what you need to do to take care, take care of this? You're really asking the wrong person.
Let me phrase it this way. No system is full. We maintain the best security we can with the resources we have. 24, 2500 companies that put millions of dollars in IT security right at their backs. You can get hacked, anything stolen. Nothing is full, but we do take it very seriously and we do mean it to a very, very high level. Our network administrator is very steadfast about making sure things are done as soon as it can be. We're very much on the leading edge. We stay away from that moving edge.
It's scary because when I was, I wanted to Google just to see if there was other stories like this. And I wrote, "How to stop hacking school computers," or something like that. And there was all these articles, "How to hack into a school computer," "How to hack," "How to hack." And I was just... And then, of course, kids hacking to change their grades is not a big thing. So it's just, it's another whole thing that we have to worry about. So I'm glad to hear that you've heard about it, you know about it, and that we're working to protect our kids.
We're very much aware of it. It is one of our highest priorities for managing the problems, making sure it stays safe.
And then when they add, like I said, the security cameras, that is a little hairy too. So it's sad that we have to worry about this, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Glad you were here.
Yeah, perfect timing. So just a quick question. The, all that virus protection and stuff, it also protects the security cameras?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay, I'm not sure how it works, so...
Our internet connection, anything that goes in and out of this building flows through our firewall.
Okay.
And that is the ability to detect some of these acts and stop them long before they even get into the building or passed it.
Okay. Okay. Great, I'm glad you're here and that we're done.
Is there a reason we couldn't put student data on a computer that's not attached to the internet? Yes. First of all, power school, because we're a district, regional wide, we have one server. If we were to put it not connected to the internet, teachers would not be able to enter grades from home. We wouldn't be able to do that from home. We would not be able to access it to pull the grades once, have the report cards remotely. It could be done, but you're also talking a subscription cost trickling, what you're looking if we did it all for our students. Teachers not being able to do it.
And then if that server went down? So this is a safer, it's actually safer this way?
So to answer your question, yes, it can be done with the practicality of this, but that's just not the way you keep it working.
Glad you were here. Thank you. Okay, report of standing committees. So, policy?
Yeah. Joy, you want to read that? Sure. So let me go through a little bit with policy because we have a new member who hasn't gone through this yet. So our procedure is that we belong to the Mass Association of School Committees and they're the ones who have helped us initially write our school committee policy manual, which is posted online and anyone can access it, it's a public document. When, about twice a year, MASC sends us information that we need to update certain policies because we're a member. This past year, however, they did an exceptionally thorough, much to my personal chagrin, update of their policy manual and it was, I think, 112 policies that were updated. So you may remember when we would say policy, I kept saying, yeah, we got to... Well, I finally got through with 112 policies. So we have what is called a policy subcommittee and there are members from all four school districts that are a part of this committee. Kim Sisone was actually at the last policy meeting, so unfortunately, she can't speak to the meeting. But they all came and I, what I had done was I went through our old policy manual and highlighted the difference between our policy, our currently existing policy, and the new policy. I highlighted it. So all everybody had to do was to say, "Oh, I get it, this is a one-word change. Vote to accept and move forward." So the subcommittee got through 38 of them at our first meeting, which was great. And those are included here. For us to accept policies, each committee has to have two readings, okay? Normally, what happens is we waive the actual reading. That's the first vote, because otherwise, we won't get home until tomorrow to read all 38 of these out loud. So we waive the actual reading of the policy. And then what happens is I can go through and explain the changes, each one, if you like, all 38. It will take, it will take a little bit of time. You've had them, I don't know if you've had a chance to review them or not. You'll notice most all of them are very simplistic. It's usually a word or two. But tonight, what I would like to ask you to do is to first take a vote, waive the actual reading, and then secondly, take a vote to accept all of them as a first reading. If you would like me to go through all 38 policies and point out the changes, I'm happy to do that. But the changes are highlighted and, you know, go through it, hopefully, it will make sense to you. Normally, what happens is you appoint members of your policy subcommittee to represent the committee. So they've already sort of done the homework for you. I think Summer will be at the next meeting when we go through our next batch of policies. But in this particular batch, in almost all cases, it's a word or two or some updates that, again, is recommended for a legal reference, there may be a change. And we will revisit these again in January for the second reading. After the second reading, the policies are accepted, but it has to go through all four committees for that to happen.
And if between now and January, when the second reading happens, if you take this home and you read it all, you feel free to contact me and be like, "I don't like this." And I'll bring it to the policy subcommittee meeting and we can discuss that there.
Great.
Because this isn't final, this is just, here's everything.
Right.
So you have it.
Can you just tell us, what was the biggest change? Was there anything that... These were all the easy changes. The first 38 were the easy ones. The more complex ones waited. I thought we'd get the easy stuff done first. Which was just... You're so good at things. Yeah, just sort of keep moving forward. So all 38 of these, for instance, the tobacco products, if you look at it, when the original policy was written, bakes didn't exist, there weren't e-cigarettes. So we had to sort of expand the definition. Wasn't a choice that I would have preferred to be publicly available to kids, but apparently, they are. So those are some of them. When you go through, you'll notice also the regulations, like the Mass General laws, some of the numbers have been removed because they changed the numbering, you know, when things change. So they've gotten rid of that. In some cases, they got rid of the word regulation, put in the word procedure. It's small stuff. These are pretty easy ones. I don't think you'll have any questions on these. Is that able to... I don't think so. I would be surprised if in any of these 38, you had that. We do have some other ones coming up that'll be a little bit more discussion. Summer has a packet here. Of this packet, and I don't know how many are in here, there might be 30-ish in here, only one of them is required. When we originally put together a policy manual, the original group felt that it was easier sometimes to not have as many detailed policies because in many ways, it limited what could be done by the policies if they're not a required policy. So that they felt it was easier to sort of trust the decision-making and so not all things were done. And they're not policies, they're more procedures. That's how we do it, procedures can change. Where policies, as you can tell, is a lot of work done. So that was the original school committee members group when we put this together. If we had every single policy that existed, the manual would probably be, you know what I mean? Like, super, super thick. So they sort of went with, well, what's actually required, what do we feel we really need? And that's what we have in our manual.
It also depends on the district. There are some policies that we might need here that they might not need somewhere else.
Exactly.
Versus some.
Exactly.
But again, like, after the first reading, just feel at any time that something isn't sitting right with you, whatever, please feel free to reach out to me and I'll bring it back to the subcommittee.
Right. And if you have any other specific question too, never hesitate to give me a call or email. So if anyone was brave enough to first make a motion to waive the actual reading, and I do need you to actually list the policies, please, so we have it for the minutes. And then the second, the second motion would be to accept as a first reading all the policies.
Can you say some more?
Yeah.
No, not this time.
All right, that's... It's like the waive, waive the actual, waive the actual reading. The actual reading, because that's why you have to read all the papers. I like to waive the actual reading of the policy and then do this all then? Yes, please. A, D, C, B, D, D, B, B, E, B, B, F, B, B, A, B, E, D, B, B, E, D, H, B, I, A, C, E, C, H, C, H, A, C, H, C, D, K, C, E, B, B, E, C, A, E, F, C, F, A, G, B, A, G, B, E, A, G, B, E, D, G, B, G, B, oh my God, G, B, I, G, B, K, G, C, F, I, C, slash, I, C, A, I, D, I, H, A, N, I, H, A, N, A, I, H, B, E, A, I, J, I, J, L, A, I, J, O, A, I, J, O, B, I, M, G, J, A, B, J, H, D, J, I, C, H, J, L, C, B. Excellent. Very nice.
All those paper.
Aye.
Aye. Sounds like a student's routine.
It did, that was excellent. You did a really nice job, Linda, thank you.
Okay, so now we need a motion to accept the first...
As its first reading, yep.
Accept the first reading.
A motion to accept the first reading of policies. Do I have to do it again? Lori has... Technically, we should list them again.
I don't know, I'll...
Do I say a motion over?
Yeah.
I make a motion to accept the first reading? A, D, C, D, 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 B, D, E, B, B, F, B, E, D, A, B, E, D, B, B, E, D, H, B, I, A, C, E, C, H, C, H, A, C, H, C, D, K, C, E, B, B, E, C, A, E, F, C, F, A, G, B, A, G, B, E, A, G, B, E, D, G, B, G, B, G, B, I, G, B, K, G, C, F, I, C, slash, I, C, A, I, D, I, H, A, N, I, H, A, N, A, I, H, B, E, A, I, J, I, J, L, A, I, J, O, A, I, J, O, B, I, M, G, J, E, B, J, H, D, J, I, C, H, J, L, C, B.
We need a second.
I said.
Those paper? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
It's the G, B, A.
See, I didn't say anything.
Thank you. And again, if you read them over and you have any questions or concerns, feel free to pen down some more. Our next meeting is next Monday at 6:00. And we'll get through the other 60, 70 or so.
Sure we will.
Negotiations are still ongoing and we have a meeting December 12th, 4 o'clock.
We do.
Pilgrim Area Collaborative, did you guys meet?
We have a, we'll be in for a second.
Okay. Great, you said the rap.
All right. Talked to Dick Steele and they're getting ready for holidays in Halifax, which is the Saturday, the 9th. The junior high dance is not happening on the 8th, that's a no. But the 5th and 6th grade dance isn't going for Friday, about 15:00. Still working on the basketball schedule. And he just said how great the art program, Art, which is the speaker, is running that in the after-school sports, Mr. Luisi and Mr... How do you pronounce it?
Forage.
Forage.
Sorry.
Thank you. He just did it.
Mr. B, you call him Mr. B.
Mr. B, that's why I don't pronounce it. Both are very, very popular and very excited about how well that's going. And he also wanted to give kudos to Mr. Bowery and Mr. Durkey. He appreciated that and you're always on the same page and how well you work together. So he gave you a shout-out. Thank you.
He's all right.
He's living there.
I heard the guys are shopping together too.
You and your girl are still at... So that's, that's it? Awesome. Thanks, Linda. PTO, do you have a girl?
No, I didn't hear. I mean, Ken hasn't reached out to me, so...
Okay.
So, when you told me that she wasn't going to be here...
Are you the alternate for?
I think I'd be the alternate, so...
When do they meet next?
I know there's some happening Thursday.
I think the next one will be during today. But I still believe they have a December meeting. So I believe the next one will be in December.
So I know that they have Breakfast with Santa, which is Saturday, the 9th, at 8:00 to 11:00. Does that sound right, anybody?
Say again?
Breakfast with Santa, what are the times for that?
I didn't have...
8:00 to 11:00.
8:00 to 11:00. Oh, good guess. Yeah, so that's sponsored by the PTO, so I know that. So when did you say the next meeting was, Kane?
I'm going to say...
Are they Wednesday?
I'm going to say the next one is January 19th, if I may.
Oh, it's Fridays.
It's a Friday. They all came, so every other month... They all hang, so every other month.
Is it posted on the website?
It is.
It's on the volume?
It's on our website, and I believe it's on the PTO website.
So when we meet in January, we're going to have to do a little reorganization with the new members. So we at that time can, between now and then, you can figure out when the next PTO meeting is. And...
So I read it down.
That'd be great. And then whatever slot came formally held, we can talk about, you know, reorganizing to whomever decides that they want to, whatever, take over or... Would you deal with that?
Just tell the new member they have to do all the things.
We can do that. Capital budget? Can you talk about the building? Yeah. Building and safety is the most. And admin review is meeting on the fourteenth at six o'clock.
Yep.
Boston, for me. Hey, Bob.
Lady time.
Union Thirty-One?
No meeting scheduled, probably have one in January, February, February, probably? Probably February.
Right, so we do the budget stuff?
Yes.
Yeah. I know. Alright, Mr. Bodri, you're up.
Alright, there we go. Enrollment, a five hundred and ninety-seven students. We have two Title I teachers, Rachel Howe, who was our former Title I teacher. She resigned at the end of October, beginning of November, to explore a different career path. So Melissa George is available for her. She comes highly recognized. She went through a series of interviews with the Title I team, Melissa Farrell, Brian's there. She has, she was recently in her preschool in Normal. She did her student teaching at Gutsberry. She definitely is ready. She's been well received. It's already started to hit the ground line, so she's a great job.
Great.
Student council, definitely have to give them kudos. We haven't had a student council here since I've been here. So Meg Parker and Kate Savage, two good, great teachers, have taken on the initiative of starting it themselves. And they really have picked the ground up. They have already done two all-school assemblies that were totally student-created and orchestrated. And they did a great job. So we had all five hundred and ninety-seven students in the gymnasium, recognizing our Students of the Month, our Citizens of the Month, and also just recognizing our expected behaviors. We just, it was just, it was great. Just how they did it, they just took charge of it. We all sat back and just enjoyed what they were able to create. So they've done a great job. They've also taken on the initiative of looking at a new AGS mascot.
Do we have a mascot?
Now we...
I think it was Hal the Bear, I believe.
Hal.
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 That's original.
But I haven't seen Hal in a couple of years. So I, right now, the student council has, they've created a bunch of ballots and they've been running around collecting them and...
That's so awesome.
They're doing a great job.
Are we going to get you a suit?
New. So it's the Hots, it's the Hero, Superheroes. I think Comback Whales was...
No.
So maybe we'll throw some school committee in later. Feel free to reach out to Meg Parker. But they're doing a great job. The kids are having a lot of fun with it. We just want to make sure we recognize them for all their efforts and do with them.
Well, it's great for like school spirit, you know, and morale building and, yeah.
And develop some leadership skills.
Exactly.
Exactly.
And they need every week and they sit there and they have all these...
What credits?
Fifty-six. Say, twenty?
Twenty.
It's twenty students on there, so it's...
So they have a little like present, basically, they have a little folder?
Ooh, what? I... But they're having one.
I just love to be a five and one. See how they get.
They're great. They're great. Megan and Kate are doing very tired, so I think they love the entertainment, I guess. They really do, they do a good job of it, so. And, oh, Ms. Machado, also our new adjustment counselor. She is spreading our Random Acts of Kindness program. So students are recognized with tickets whenever they are shown some extreme acts of kindness. So they receive a ticket and then they put them in this, it's almost like a bingo, like a big wheel that we have in the office. Run down like, "I got a ticket." So excited about it. And we'll pull the names out in the next assembly. It's impressive.
So they have to be caught doing it without them knowing, like, "Look it, I'm snacking on candy."
So they're students are...
They're all wonderful actresses.
Now they're on Facebook.
And it's such a, Bodri has four and nine cups of coffee. They just don't know. Evacuation.
Yeah, Tuesday, November twenty-first, we worked with Chief Slaughter and Chief Verbalis and had a successful evacuation drill. We did one two years ago, we evacuated to the town hall in the church. This year, we all made it over to the church. We were either in the great worship area, or off to the rec area, or in the basement. So we assigned to classrooms. I thought it was fantastic. I thought the staff did an awesome job. I thought the students did an unbelievable job. We were there, seated, all accounted for, and we embattened our classrooms in like twenty-two minutes, so. Quite a success.
That's impressive.
Yeah, it was very successful.
You've had six hundred tapes like that, morally, in twenty-two minutes?
Crossing the street.
It's great. I mean, and we went to three different areas in the church. We were in the basement and all these, those little rooms, I don't know if you've ever been in there, but there's a bunch of rooms down the preschool area. And then we were in the side rec room, and then we were in the church area. It was pretty fantastic how everyone was able to get open. And both chiefs were super impressed with it. Glad to be able to... Our windows, side doors, fire suppression project. We had our second meeting just recently, just last week. So really it was more talking the logistics of the schedules. I was still hoping it would work. We were excited to just be here. There are a few things, like this whole south facing side, it's all windows will be tinted because this gets a lot of sun and it's, I mean, all these rooms in the back do that. They heat it. Sometimes the projectors are difficult to see, to kind of catch the projectors. And shades are included, so it's, happy as can be. Shades are included in the project, so for her side. And then they were just talking about logistics. Do they really need to take down all of the ceilings? Or can they remove some of the panels? So that was some of the discussion of what they can, cannot do. They seem to be able to fill content that they need to fill.
Substantially.
Substantially, definitely did. There was some back and forth with that discussion about what substantially completed means because for us, the fire suppression system...
Has to be done.
Has to function and be working for us. So they seem like they had, they didn't have a problem getting it all up and running. I think the day that they agreed on was August twenty. It was funny to have to get back to the classroom. I'm sure they're all set for a meeting. Or six.
And the roof is one hundred percent done?
Roof is done.
Yeah.
So, yep.
It's living, but you can feel...
Yeah, it actually makes a difference in the building.
Gets colder, you can feel the warmth. It's definitely a change in the building that anyone can do, so.
Have we had a good rating?
Oh, yeah.
Stand finish.
We had, on Thursday, November thirtieth, we had seven staff members that have been called and attended social, emotional, responsive classroom training. This is our year two training. So we have approximately over twenty-five staff members at least attending a one-day training, which is good. It's our tier one, school-wide, social, emotional approach. Hopefully we'll have more staff members attending March trainings. That will definitely keep that for sure.
And we actually had a first budget meeting, smooth as a bean. Everything's approved. Brian Valley, that was Gerald Joy last year, just kind of pitched the first draft. So we decided, well, we will continue to hear your thoughts. So any feedback that you have.
Do you have Mr. Durkey's wish list?
Got it. He's in there. I think he's scaling back a little bit.
Oh, good for him.
He's feeling pretty good.
Yeah.
I think with all the things going on in the building, I think he sort of realizes.
Yeah.
I just got to share one, one, Julia. He wants to get wireless clocks.
Oh, my god.
Running clocks. Wireless syncing clocks. So we, right now, we have a wish list.
So he doesn't have to change all of them?
Yes. So each time is a flip. So we have a combination, most of the clocks, like this one's hardwired, but some are hardwired and some are just batteries. So when we do a flip or daylight savings, our guys have to run around and change the clocks because they're not set. But he is pitching to us that he...
Apple and Delta.
Yeah, that happened.
A new wireless syncing system.
Sounds cheap.
No. It's no limit button.
It's not there, she flat, you know, we, I, he said that we would entertain, so.
It was entertaining.
We will push it back a couple of years, but no, it was...
Yeah. Anyone heard that?
So it was, it was a great discussion, we were having that, but so I think we're in a good place. So we'll just kind of wait and see where someone first falls in place. If they want to pitch.
Jen, it'll be here for the general school committee.
Yep.
And they won't be here to pitch.
And we'll have a second meeting. The way we do budgets, again, for new members, is Kane does budget with Brian and Matt for the building. And his budget includes information he received from Melissa Farrell on curriculum information. It includes any supplies that the building might need, any supplies Matt's requesting. Steve does the technology budget, and I'll have him talk a little bit when I'm speaking. And Marie does the special education portion. Christine also will do three pieces of the budget that are what we're calling more of a fixed cost that are separate from the school. One is transportation, and that's based on our class contract. And she'll do utilities, and then also staff. Staff is usually about eighty percent of the budget. Okay, so that includes, you know, people who are moving steps and lanes, if they're taking classes, you know, all those things, and to make sure we have everyone. So there's five or six pieces that feed into getting a final budget number. So Kane and Brian, Matt have done their piece of it. Steve has done his piece, Marie has done her piece, Christine's in process. And we're going to pull all those pieces together and hopefully when we do that, the percentage increase will be reasonable that we'll bring forward, which is how we were able to achieve last year. You know, when we brought the number forward, the town was very happy with what we presented. They thought it was a very reasonable budget and we didn't have to make any cuts. That's sort of my goal again, is to bring forward a reasonable budget. So we'll see how it, how it works out. But we have all the pieces coming together, it's a bit of a puzzle. And again, just multiply all of that by four. About five, short plus budget, so, yeah. That's pretty much all we're doing right now. So if I start back with, with a good reason.
We'll give you a chance.
So for breakfast, we have Holidays in Halifax, this is seven. Eight to eleven. And that's the PTO personnel, the purpose room, and then that area. Some pretty amazing events. It's really the biggest event that the PTO puts on up here, so we're excited. That will be all the day for us. Then Mrs. Lazard kicks off the Holidays in Halifax, the afternoon events in the all-purpose room. And I believe her performance is at the meeting. And then after that, it's the dance, Dance World, it's the excellent all-purpose room. Dick Steele is in the gymnasium having his...
Petting zoo?
Holidays, it's dragon, but I'm not sure what. It's jumping. So we're hoping it'll be a great day, a little bit of snow.
Yeah.
What do you feel about that?
It's not awesome.
The eleven room. We have turn one report cards going up. The nineteenth is our winter concert. We'll have an in-school concert during the day for students, just as our trial on. And then Mrs. Lazard will have a nighttime concert at six.
Who's in, you know, who's in? This is a...
Chorus.
It's the chorus.
It's the chorus and Amy and Dana.
And Dana.
It's fantastic, man, it really is. She does a great show. She's just a, can't get current. And then twenty-fifth, or Friday, is the holiday break.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Christine?
Thank you. I know you won't be reading this. It's the time of slides. In your package, you have a copy of the financial plan tonight. And the first page is just a summary by function code. You don't have to go onto page one to detail, which is the next page. We do have a few chapters instead of keeping up right now. The first one, which we talked about last month, it's on, we have a top of the first page. It is under our N, N, S, C, the first page. It's a deficit of three point four cents. We got a due assessed to us from Mass Association, this is okay. And then I quote it based on the enrollment of the district. So the rates were just a little bit more than I had budgeted for. So we'll work that into next year's budget. The next item I want to mention is on that same page, about two-thirds of the way down the page. It's a deficit of dollars under that sentence. We're doing a star assessment program. My budget was a little too technical, so we need to go to the floor for this check. This is good, if we're picking up a little one, this is good. Then we get to page three, there's a few more things to be used through. In special education, we now, everything is not full, but we are aware of it. One of the first things I wanted to mention is two-thirds of the way down the page, under Contracted Services, we'll see a deficit of seven thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars and five cents. There have been some additional assessments that had to happen this year that weren't necessarily planned on. Basically, that we know right now, that's what we expect at least for the end of the year, if there are significant changes. Just a little bit, we won't see special education tuition, and that appears to have a deficit of a hundred twenty-three thousand dollars. Don't get alarmed, that is our balance before we apply any surfer breaker money this year. So once we stop to use the surfer breaker money as it comes over, but once it comes in, we can stop to use it and it will be reflected in our financial. So once we account for all of it, we do expect, then we'll have a surplus at the end of the year.
When does it come in?
It comes in early.
Oh, okay.
So our first one came in just at the end of September. So we can't, don't start spreading until... So we can't, don't start spreading until once we put it in. So as it stops to, we'll stop to use those funds as we need to.
Oh, okay.
And if we don't need to use all of it, we'll have a little interest in this year.
Okay.
But we'll use what we need to get through this year. And then on the next page, we have our out-of-district location account. We have a slight surplus between transportation tuition of $6,200. We had seven students apply and seven students available. Our, we've confirmed all of our estimates that we have for the encumbrances. So last month, the deficit was, I think, right around $4,000. So it's, sorry, the surplus was about $4,000. It's grown just a little because we tweaked some of the numbers and we got the final actual amounts. So that's what we expect to be for the end of the year, as long as nothing changes.
Do you think we look okay?
We're looking okay. There's nothing out there.
Okay.
This is great.
Yes, that's great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, of course.
Any questions?
Okay, when he's done washing the whiteboard a lot. My windows in my house are awful. So Marie Grable is our administrator of special education, and she's going to be giving us a presentation tonight regarding current future programs in the district.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. I wanted to start the presentation with just an overview of where we are in special education and the services that we provide to our students, and then take a look at some budget and some historic numbers of the last couple of years that I've been tracking. And then to close by sharing with you some thoughts and ideas about future programs that I would like to expand upon. So I just wanted to start with just an overview of what special education is. So special education is all services designed to level the playing field, equal the playing field for students with disabilities. We service children that are about to turn age three, all the way through the eve of their 22nd birthday. So that's quite a large span. But it's a series of specially-designed instruction or services to help students that have a variety of different disabilities. When we talk about what type of disabilities would find a child eligible to receive special education services, the state of Massachusetts has identified this list for us. So the very first question that we ask ourselves as a team is, does the child have one or more of the following disabilities? So that's the very first question that we ask. And based on the information that is brought to the table through evaluations, through reports, through feedback of parents and other team members, we look to determine whether or not a child has one or more of those disabilities. Once we've made that determination, we then ask if the child is making effective progress in school, and if they're not, is it a direct result of one or more of the following disabilities? And if we're still with that conversation, that the child is struggling, not making effective progress, and it is a result of one or more of the following disabilities, then a child would qualify for an IEP. Okay? Any questions about the categories?
Does a medical doctor have to, um, have to diagnose?
Yeah.
For the original component?
Yes. It depends on what the disability is. And what we do when we develop IEPs is we look for disabilities that have an educational impact. And I don't believe we have any doctorates on our media staff. Some things that we, obviously, as an educational team, can diagnose, and some things we cannot, and we would need to rely on information from an outside source on that.
So not necessarily?
Not necessarily, yes. Yes. So the next slide looks at a breakdown of the student population for special education. And I'm a firm believer of transparency and consistency. And what I like to do is show you, of course, Halifax, but I also want to show you Kingston, Clinton, and Silver Lake, so you have a comparison, so you can see the whole picture. So as you can see, I track fiscal years, 15, 16, 17. And the student population that has been identified as students with IEPs has moved from 118, 140 in FY16, and to 131. So there hasn't been, over the last couple of years, great fluctuation in numbers. Okay? So we're pretty much maintaining in that particular area. Specific to the town of Halifax, I wanted to give you a snapshot of the students in terms of the type of placements that they're in. So we have different levels of services that we provide to students. We currently have 87 students within the brick and mortar of this building that have been identified as students with disabilities and have IEPs. So that's how this chart reads. You have 13 students that are participating in the integrated preschool program over in Kingston. We have a series of in-district substantially separate programs, which I'll be speaking to in more detail in future slides. But Halifax currently has 10 students that are participating in those programs. And we currently have 21 students that, because of the nature of their disability, we've needed to identify an out-of-district placement. When we talk about out-of-district placements, there are basically three different types or three levels. We have our private placements, which would be something like the May Center or Cardinal Pushing, if those are familiar to you, I believe. We have public school placements. So say, for example, if Marshfield has a program that we don't offer, we could tuition a student into Marshfield Public Schools. And then we have collaborative placements. We're members, as you know, of the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, but there are other collaboratives in the area that also offer some programming that we have been, we've placed some students there before. So we have Pilgrim Area Collaborative, Reed's Collaborative, which is based in Middleborough, North River Collaborative, which is based in Rockland, and South Shore Educational Collaborative, which is based in Hangham. So those are the four that are geographically closest to us. And depending on the needs of the child, the age of the child, and the type of program, that's how we determine what type of placement we would be recommending. Any questions on the type of placements for our students? I've provided a similar slide for Clinton and Kingston to give you the sense of where the other students in our other communities are placed. I won't spend time going through those. You have them in your packet, but if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them for you. Okay? So we're going to go past that one to excellent. So this next slide looks at tuition and transportation. There are three main components to the budget that I present for each of the communities. Tuition and transportation are the top two. The other area is contracted services. So those are the three areas that I watch, I monitor, and I provide the budget for each of the communities in those areas.
If I may interrupt, ODP stands for out-of-district placement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I wanted to show, through the course of the years here, a comparison of what the tuitions have cost for the out-of-district placements and what transportation has cost for out-of-district students. As you can see, for FY18, the tuitions are 1,758... I should just say 739. And transportation comes in around 422. But again, I thought it would be important for you to see the historic perspective of where things trend over the years.
So why is there a pretty decent jump in transportation and not in tuition?
That's a great question. It depends on the need of the students and where they're geographically located. So if you have a student, for example, that is in a wheelchair, that's a more expensive transportation than a regular van that we would need. We have to get a specialized wheelchair van for that.
Okay.
Also, again, geography. If we have a student that is placed in Middleborough or Reed's versus a place that's in Canton or Waltham.
Okay.
So all of those are factors.
Okay.
Unfortunately, they don't correlate with each other.
Right, so I was looking at the numbers too, and I was like trying to make sense of them.
And again, I wanted you to see Clinton and Kingston as well. Any questions on this page? So out-of-district tuitions can be very expensive. But as Christine was chatting about earlier with regard to Circuit Breaker, Circuit Breaker is a funding source from the state that allows us to help offset some of the costs. So the way Circuit Breaker works is that there is a foundation amount. And for FY17, it was just over $43,000. If you see where I'm looking right there, the foundation was $43,000. So what they've said to us is, if you have a tuition that is under $43,000, we really can't help and give you any reimbursement for that. However, if you have a tuition that is over $43,000, we're going to give you a percentage of the amount that is over the $43,000. Okay? So if I have a tuition that is $44,000, I'll get a percentage of that $1,000. Does that make sense? And tuitions really range in prices. Some of the public school tuitions might be in the 30s, $30,000-ish. Some of the collaboratives could be anywhere from 30 to 50. Some of the privates get a little bit more expensive. And then, of course, if we have students that are placed residentially, that is extremely expensive. So it runs the whole gamut. So when we are able to claim a tuition because it exceeds foundation, we get a reimbursement, a percentage of that. I think last year, was it about 65? It was about 65% of the difference. Does that make sense? Okay. So that amount that comes into a Circuit Breaker, that helps us to offset some of the tuitions. The other opportunities that we have to help offset some of our expenses is through grants. So the one main grant that I monitor is the 240 grant. All the grants are just quoted by numbers and fancy names. But as you can see, the 240 grant for FY18 was just over $1 million. So it's a nice amount of money that the state gives to us to help offset the expenses of servicing our students. So they allocate the funds per the communities. So they tell us, okay, Halifax, you just got $168,000. Okay, they have their own formula. It's based on the student population and the number of students that have IEPs. So they determine that amount of money, and then I write the grant to determine how that money is going to be spent or allocated. For this particular grant, for the 240 grant, a majority of the funds help support the salaries of our paraprofessionals, our paraprofessionals that are working directly with the students. I'd say probably a good 89% of it goes toward that. The balance I use to help support any sort of contracted services to help fund that.
Does the state have to approve when you spend it?
It has to be, they, the state tells a description of how you can use the money. And then when I write the grant, I write a narrative of how I intend to apply the money. And then, yes, they have to approve it. So as long as it's within the parameters of the grant, it's, I don't think I've ever had one not approved. No.
And I don't know if it's like any, like a grant, like when you write a grant to do research, like you have to spend it on what you said that you were going to spend it on.
Absolutely, absolutely. So as I said, about 90% goes towards salaries. If that changes, if it's only 85 or if it becomes 95, I actually have to amend the grant to show that each of the line items are appropriate. Okay? So we have our 240 grant, but we also have another grant that's coded 262. So this one is to help service our students in our preschool, ages three through five. And you can see, it dropped considerably from FY15 and FY16 compared to 17 and 18. It was cut pretty much in half. So this is a much smaller grant, all in total. It was just over $24,000, and Halifax received 6,400 of that. And again, this goes toward the paraprofessionals that are working in preschool. Okay? No, the grants have to offset the costs.
It doesn't make a break.
No. The next two grants I wanted to show you. This grant is 274, and it is a grant that is earmarked for professional development for teachers and staff members that are working with students with disabilities. And as you can see, it's been roughly about $30,000 every year. So it was a nice sizable grant for professional development. And the state did not have the money to support that grant this year. So we have had a luxury of $30,000 to help support teachers in their professional development over the last three years, and this year, that money is non-existent.
You've had things like this happen in the year 19, it could come back?
It could come back. Absolutely. The next slide is for Grant 298, which also got cut, although it's a much smaller grant. This is also for professional development. And again, this one was to target staff that work in preschool for staff working with children ages three to five. Again, this grant was, for the last two years, has been about $5,000. I'm not surprised that this one was not renewed. As you can see, in FY15, it was $20,000. So we kind of saw the writing on the wall when it went down to $5,000. So that's just another funding source that's non-existent for us this year. So now I just want to spend a little bit of time talking about the substantially separate programs that we have currently in the region and where we'd like to go with them. We currently have three different types of programs right now, primarily based at KIS, but I have another visual to help, piece where they all go. The first of the three programs is what we call the Developmental Learning Center. The high school version of that is actually called the GOLZ program. Please don't quiz me and ask me what GOLZ stands for, because I don't remember. But the Developmental Learning Center is for students that have disabilities such as intellectual, neurological, they could be on the autism spectrum, just significant developmental delays. The Structured Learning Center is more designed to support students with social, emotional needs, more like a therapeutic program. And then finally, our language-based program, the newest of the three programs, is to help students that have specifically a language-based learning disability. So those are the three types of programs that we have. So now I want to take you through where they are. So our Developmental Learning Center, I'm pleased to say that we have a program in our integrated preschool. It currently has about 13 students, seven in our morning session and six in the afternoon. And some of those, within that 13, some of them stay throughout the day. We have a Developmental Learning Center at Kingston Elementary. This current year, we have 12 students. Looks like going into next year, we will have 16 students. That's a large number of students for a substantially separate program. So one of the thoughts that we've had in the conversation is to actually bring on board another teacher and split that program into for next year. Now, these programs that I'm talking about right now, they're funded through a revolving account. So when I took a look at what the tuitions that are charged back to the communities currently with the addition of the new students going into next year, there really won't be a significant change to the tuitions that are charged back. Kingston Intermediate also has a Developmental Learning Center. This year, they currently have 11 students. And going into next year, they will also be maintaining that number. They'll have 11 students going into next year as well. We also have programs to serve... We also have programs to service the population of students at the middle school and the high school. As I said, the high school program has been called the GOLZ program. The middle school program, we're seeing the attrition of the students that have been supported in the substantially separates at the Kingston Intermediate School. And those sixth graders are now coming up to the middle school. So we're looking to expand those programs. And we've been able to do that quite successfully. One of the, one that's in yellow there, that's a proposal that I have that I'm super excited about. I would, and I spoke to you about this last year too, as being one of my goals, is to create a program for our students that are ages eighteen to twenty-two. Right now, we send students within that age range. We send them either to North River Collaborative, to a community vocational center or a program that they run. Or we have an opportunity to send students to Bridgewater State University under the ICE program. And we've had a small group of students within that category. But going into next year, we'll have between four to six students that will be in that cohort. The tuitions for students that go to North River Collaborative for that community vocational program average about thirty-two thousand dollars. On top of that, we're also transporting them, which is another fifteen thousand or so. So it is most definitely a cost savings to move forward and create this program. And not only that, the students will have an opportunity to have that community vocational experiences within their own home communities, which is really the ultimate goal of what we want to achieve. So that's where, that's why that's in yellow, because it's a new proposal going into next school year. Any questions about that?
So would it necessarily affect the budget for FY eighteen if it be nineteen? Or is it something that will be developing?
I'd like this program to have its doors open in September.
Okay, so it will be in September, yes, okay.
So this program that we're talking about will not, if it's approved and goes through a revolving fund, it will be the out-of-district special education on the elementary, which is separate from our day budget. So it would not be part of the Silver Lake budget. It would be part of that out-of-district piece. But again, only Halifax students will be charged to Halifax.
Right.
Which is how we work the revolving funds.
So you said that there's four to six students in the district?
It'll all three, yes.
Okay, so they're not...
No.
Okay.
No.
I was curious.
Yeah. That's a good question. Any other questions about that transition program?
Okay, I actually have one more, sorry.
Sure.
You had mentioned last year when you did your budget presentation that there has to be, I mean, obviously you feel that this is a large enough number of students that it would be financially feasible and beneficial for us to create a program like this. Does each program kind of have its own number of students that would make it like beneficial to have an in-house program as opposed to sending them out?
Yes, absolutely.
So it varies with each program?
It does vary with each program. But what I do is I try to assess the overall operational costs. So what it would take to bring a transition program up and running. How much does that cost? And then compare that to what we are projected to pay for those tuitions if those children were to go out. So as I said, North River Collaborative, the current tuition is about thirty-two thousand. And then again, another fifteen on top of that for transportation. So when you add that up, if, when we look to create a program like that, if that falls under what we would be spending to send students out, then it makes financial sense to me to bring the proposal to you.
And also that we have the facilities to host them?
Yes, absolutely. And all of that has been explored. This program would be housed at the high school. We looked at space. We looked at all the other components that would be necessary for this program to get up and running.
Okay, great.
It's exciting.
Yeah, it's fantastic. So, all right.
The next slide looks at the continuum for our Structured Learning Center. And as I said, this is for the students that have some social, emotional needs. So more of a therapeutic program. There is currently a program at Kingston Elementary. It has about eight students there right now. And it will have about, I'm sorry, Kingston Intermediate, thank you Joy. And it will have approximately eight students next year as well. So we're not proposing any changes in that program. The middle school currently has four students. Next year, they're projected to have seven. And right now, those students are really just beginning that program at the middle school because they've graduated up from Kingston Intermediate. So the majority of the students are seventh graders. So next year, I don't see a need for the program to continue up at the high school. But the year after, for 2019, 2020, I anticipate that there will be enough of a cohort to recommend this program up at the high school. But we're not there yet, but I wanted to include it so you could see the timeline. Okay? And then the last program we have at Kingston Intermediate is the Language-Based Learning Center, which I'm very, very pleased about. That was actually the first program that I brought to you. It's been very successful for our students. This year, we currently have seven in the program. Next year, we're scheduled to have about eight. And we are at a point right now where we are looking to expand that program into the middle school. I anticipate next year that there will be seven students in that program at the middle school. And again, I don't anticipate a need for next school year for a high school version of this. But in two years down the road, for 2019, 2020, we'll have that need.
So currently, the students that are leaving the intermediate school, I'm sure we have some in the middle school right now, but they're being sent out for this program?
This year in particular, we worked with Mr. DePille and I worked to see how we could create the foundation of the program for this current school year without adding additional staff. And we were very successful in that. But as the numbers increase and as we're bringing two programs up to the middle school, we're at a point right now where we do need to identify the staffing for the programs. And these are also revolving accounts. Just, they would be revolving accounts just like the other programs are.
So did the programs not exist prior? Or they did, it was just a small enough number of students that it could be handled with the staff that was already in place in the building?
For this year, it was small enough, no worries. For last year, they didn't exist.
So where did those students go last year?
Out of district.
Out of district, okay. All right, that's what I was getting at.
Are all three of these substantially separate programs?
Yes.
So they don't integrate to the classroom?
They do, actually. Their primary base is here, but they all integrate into the general life of the building as much as possible. And all of that is individualized. For some students, they could be fully included and just need to check in. For other students, they need to be in a program like this all day long. And anywhere in between.
It's class?
Yes. It's all individualized.
I did just want to mention one thing. The reason we host in Kingston is there are our biggest buildings and they have the space. So Halifax and Plimpton students' tuition into Kingston. It's just they have the space, so they have the capacity. But that's why they're housed there.
Are there, so we send children out of district. So you had mentioned, and we talked about this a little bit last year, just because I don't know much about the topic. So there's an opportunity for children that live outside of our district to come in and use our programs and get tuition from them, from the other towns?
Correct.
So now currently, do you see in the surrounding areas that this would be an opportunity for us? I don't know how far the umbrella goes, you know?
It most definitely will. With regard to the Language-Based Program.
Okay.
I've actually already received two or three inquiries over the last six or seven months to see if we have a program like this that another community could transition or tuition a student in. So they're definitely out there and they're definitely looking for programs. And once we're established with our middle school and our high school programs, we'll have an opportunity to tuition students in.
Okay, so how large typically can that cohort get before we can't handle anymore without our own students?
Our own students would obviously, first, first and foremost always. Every, if I were to receive a call from another district asking to consider that student for the program, I would go through that referral process very carefully. I would want to visit the student in that school setting. I would want to maybe have a day for that student to come and visit us in our setting to make sure it's the right fit. And if it's not the right fit, I wouldn't take the referral.
Okay, so you have control?
I have total control.
Okay, that's great.
And when they get, or do they come from another place? Is exactly the amount of money that it costs?
No, and that's a great question as well. I can also set the tuition rate. Obviously, as I showed you earlier, different types of placements. I had mentioned collaboratives, private, and I also mentioned public. Say, for example, if Duxbury or Marshfield or Plymouth had a program that we didn't have and I wanted to tuition into them, they would tell me what the rate is. And however, they have their own tuition programming that's up to them. It doesn't matter what they charge for their tuitions. Whether one community, I'm not even sure if they would establish a revolving account like this. Ours is a little complicated. Yeah, so I could actually set the rate. But obviously, I would know a typical rate for a public or a collaborative or a private. And I would be competitive with that.
So is it something that you look every year and say, okay, we charge X amount of dollars for this one child that costs a little bit more, so next year we go up?
Mm-hmm, absolutely. And that's what the other communities do as well.
Nobody's like gouging?
No, no, we really want to work together. You know, as I said, collaboratives, they basically start their tuitions around thirty, thirty-five thousand. So to make it enticing for the neighboring community to come to our public school instead of a local collaborative, we would want to keep that figure in mind and maybe set tuitions at like maybe twenty-five thousand. And to your point, if there is a greater level of need or a greater level of service, we could adjust the tuition. And then that would help us offset the cost of operating our own programs internally. Any questions on that?
Who are you trying to talk to? Move along!
This is just the last slide, just to talk about future goals and discussions, which I've shared with you in all of the other slides. What was really neat for me personally, when I sat down with Joy and I looked at my PowerPoint from last year, we're really hitting all of the goals and discussions from what I came through last year. I said, this is what I want to do, this is where I'd love to see us go. And we're going there, we're doing it. And you know, that's really exciting for me. That's it, that's me.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
It's really wonderful that you come in and take the time to present all this information to us and give us an opportunity to ask questions, because it's so complicated and intricate.
It can be complicated, yes. And I'm happy to come back anytime and focus in any particular area. You know, I'm using this format so you can kind of see the bigger picture. But if you have any feedback, if there's any information that you're curious about that I didn't share today or if you'd like to see it represented in many different ways, by all means, give me that feedback and I'll tailor it and give you any information that you need.
Great.
Thank you for all your...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I invited Steve Collier tonight, and he's already our chief, thank you Steve, to talk a little bit about his portion of the budget, which is the technology. And I thought he might just give us a little bit of information. I wasn't giving out the handout at this point that he sort of put together. Everything's in the initial phases and will probably have some changes. But if it's okay, I may have to sort of make the rounds to begin the technology discussion.
So as Joy mentioned, eventually we've received a handout that looks like this, but prettier than a big car. This is how we base our technology budget into the different categories. To give you just an overview, the first category, which is our school management curriculum software subscriptions. This is basically, it falls under the technology budget because we tend to buy for all the buildings in all four districts and it's easier to manage from some point. Some of it wouldn't necessarily be considered technology. Things like the library management program. It's more for the educational management of the curriculum software. That's actually staying exactly where it was last year, no increases. Technology management software subscriptions. This is things like our antivirus software, our filtering system, our Microsoft licensing subscription, things like that, and our internet service. This is going to see a major increase this year of, it's going up about seven thousand dollars. And that is because we are desperately in need of a better internet connection in the building. Right now, we have the best Comcast business-class modem supplying the building. But those are really only designed to service between fifty and a hundred users. Right now, we have a daytime four hundred people on the internet in this building. We can have all of that. We are in desperate need of a new fiber internet connection. We actually went through the process of contacting the Education Superhighway Group, which is a nonprofit set up to help school districts and states research internet connections, go out, contact all the vendors, and find the best pricing on what you need. And so we went through that process and we've settled on a company to bring in the internet service. And we are hoping to get that in sooner than later because everything we do is using technology today. And with all of the learning going on online, basically our textbook curriculum is online. We need the bandwidth in order to keep moving along. And that actually is interesting because today Joy actually sent me a Comcast. They're our associated people. If you picture it right now, we're like a ten-lane highway, filtered out to the one lane where we go out on the internet. And we need to have all ten lanes moving at the same time, otherwise everything sucks. Supplying repairs, we are actually asking for a little increase in our repair budget because a lot of our equipment's getting on the older side. We do a lot of our repairs in-house, but things we just can't handle in-house, we do have to send out. And then technology, hardware and system technology. We are putting in requests for wireless access points for the building. It's in the budget because we do, when we apply for E-rate funding, and E-rate will actually fund, I believe, forty percent of the cost of the access points and installation. But we need to show that we have the money budgeted for what we apply. So...
Funding funds?
Yes. And so that's where we stay at the tech budget.
The other thing I did just want to mention while Steve was here is we're hoping to get the REAP grant again next year. This year, we got about fifty thousand.
It was actually less, it was more like thirty-nine.
Was it that low?
Last year was forty-five, I think it dropped down to close to forty. I'll tell you exactly.
It was somewhere between thirty-nine and forty-five. The number that we have to stay at is six hundred. If you're watching our numbers, we're just under that six hundred mark. So as long as we sort of stay there, we're okay, but we're like right on that edge, okay? So that's sort of that magic number that I don't know why the government picked the number six hundred, but they did. They consider it small and rural as long as we stay under that, okay? So right now, it looks like we're still going to be okay and we should get it for one more year. But I honestly don't know exactly how they determine or like, it's apparently like an average daily attendance. And I don't know where they actually even get that number, but...
So can you remind us what exactly falls under the REAP grant? Like I know it's technology, but can it pay for anything? Like, I know it's technology, but can it pay for anything pertaining to technology?
It can't do like the wiring, it's more the hard materials, like Chromebooks, projectors for classrooms. We've done.
So could it technically provide funding for this modem, or what now?
It cannot provide anything under a contract.
Yes.
We can't enter into a contract.
Okay, okay.
This year, we actually did replace a number of our projectors here because the original ones were probably first started, and that's almost six years ago, and they're starting to fail. And we found the cost of repairing them actually is still valuable, the projector.
So the REAP grant's been a huge help. I don't know if you remember way back, but the town used to put a technology article outside of our budget to supply. Since we've been able to get the REAP grant, they haven't been doing that. So it's really been beneficial to get that grant. I believe we'll be able to get it again next year, but I, again, I just want to remind you, we keep sort of edging that.
When will it be announced?
Not until September, because why would they make it easy for us?
So if September, we have 599, and then November, we have 600?
It would be the following year.
Oh, it was September?
It's based on the year prior, but we won't know until we actually get it. And it made it much more difficult. How much was it?
Thirty-nine five seven six this year.
Thirty-nine five seven six this year. So it did go down, but again, it's money that, other than the paperwork process, which was really a lot of quality time we spent together, it, you know, it's excellent way for us to get the money in the town, not have to provide it, to give us what we need for the students.
So the increases that he's alluding to, we want to build them into, we would like to build them into our budget, not a separate technology article.
I think we'll have a touch. I don't think we're quite there yet. You know, we can see if the town would prefer us to do that. As long as we're still getting the REAP grant, I can't imagine the town would want to do a separate technology article, considering, you know, they put in almost $4 million, I think, for the repairs of the building. So, you know, I wouldn't consider asking at this point in time. I think we're doing pretty well for a separate technology article. You know, to Steve's point that we are, we do need to deal with some of our bandwidth issues. And that isn't something we can do through REAP.
Right.
So we'll have to do some priority discussions. Once we have an opportunity to put Steve's recommendations, Kane, Brian, Matt, you know, Melissa for curriculum, and Christine puts together her pieces, and we have Marie's special ed. As I said, it's really a puzzle. I mean, that's really the only sort of symbol I can help. It's really, we have this, we have this, you know, we have this, and, you know, what are our priorities, and to see where the town, what the town is looking for. I mean, the town has asked us to come forward with level of service, which is what we're planning on doing. Sometimes level of service, though, you know, there's some increases you can't always control.
Are you aware of any talks of any sort of like legislation to support the, like, I know there's big push to make the testing online. So there was a conversation on the Hill about whether or not there's going to be legislation to fund some of the, some of these issues in the building with, you know, smaller schools that don't have the financial capacity to keep up, basically. Do you know of anything like, I haven't been paying attention recently.
I have not heard of any grant opportunities like that. I know E-Rate is designed to help fund the wireless access, and actually, the state did have a grant that we looked into to also help fund the wireless access, but not the internet connection. But the grant was needs-based, and according to the state, I'm not needing.
Oh, okay. But I mean, you're pretty much on top of like searching for any.
Yes, I do keep my eye out. I spend the school's money on experiments by my own.
He's a really good little shopper. He really is. So as I said, I just wanted you to have an opportunity, I don't know if you had any other questions about technology, but the technology is an important part of the budget. Special education's an important part of the budget. And you may remember November, I think, we have Melissa Creaman, she talked about the curriculum. So those are three pieces of it. And then in January, sometime prior to Christmas, hopefully, all those pieces will fall together and it will be a budget, and I will send it out to you for a Christmas present. And, I know, I hope you love that. So I'll send that out to you, and that'll give you a sense to review it. And then the Tuesday after New Year's, we'll have our first meeting, when we'll actually go through the budget. Okay? But now you've got all, you know, you've got the pieces anyway. And did you have any other questions for Steve, or? No? Okay. I did just want to mention, Kane handed to me, and I apologize because I sort of do this off the cuff, but Matt Griffey applied for a grant through MIAA, a business management grant, and he was able to get some carpets for the stairs. I got you mid-chew, didn't I?
The stairs that go up to the second floor on both ends, the treads are above. So this is the second year in a row he's gotten grant through MIAA, so he's.
$4,296. He had applied last year, and he was able to get some security for our doors, for our elementary doors, where the doors can be locked from inside. When we did the training for our Alice training last year, if you remember, we're talking about it, they worked really well. We had this sort of crazy person running around the building screaming. I did not know the person had the lung capacity to do this. It was Brian. Scared the daylights out of me. And he was banging on the door, and they helped really well this whole time. I don't remember who I was behind the door, but it was, it was pretty impressive. So he was able to get some of these things through MIAA to the town, which is great. Which I keep meaning to get, ask the other schools why we're not getting these from the other schools, just they don't have an awesome custodian.
Last year, you got a huge amount.
He did, it was huge.
Close to $10,000.
Yeah.
You know, like, some carpets squared, like in the cafeterias, some type of footing, you got a ramp outside the cab door, knees.
It's not spreading out yet.
Oh, yeah.
But anyway, Matt, you know, it's wonderful that Matt takes the time to do these. You know, grants, there's a variety of work involved in grants sometimes, they're not too bad. But often, they can be really a lot of making sure you dotted your I's, crossed your K's, and filled out every single box, and given the information we're looking for in order to secure them. But, you know, take the initiative to do these things. It's really something I wanted to commend him, so please thank him, and I will try to remember to do that.
See you over time.
So thank you for that. In terms of an update on the roofing project, it's done? So that was really easy?
Was it easy?
It was really easy. And again, I really want to thank everybody about, Cape Way was wonderful, really a great, great group to work with. We were absolutely thrilled, as a matter of fact, I have, the architect is going to be doing some work for us on deck, so I now have my little pool of my workers, so I'm really excited about for the other building, so. But, you know, the architects and the project manager, Donald Will, was wonderful to work with, so that was, and it looks great. I can't get over the extras, the chimneys, the chimneys look really good. And in terms of the summer building projects, again, these are really, really major projects. Please understand, the building will not be open. As a matter of fact, I believe I'm going to be kicking Kane and Brian out of the building. So, I mean, we literally will be having only the custodians within the building working, you know, because we will be having limited, all sprinklers will be out of the building, you know, in process. And then we've got the windows, the siding, the doors. It will be a major, major construction here. I'm hopeful. We've got the same team, obviously not the roofers, but we have the same team of architects and the project manager that were excellent, so we had a great experience with them. So I'm confident that it will get done, but it is going to be a really tight schedule. The good news is, the work that to me is the most difficult is indoors, so it's not weather-dependent. You know, the roof is, if we had really horrible summer, I mean, we really could have had a problem. Fire suppression system, it doesn't really matter what's happening outside. So hopefully, we will be able to get this done, we'll get good workers in, and, you know, Brian and Kane and Matt have experience now, and we got this.
We'll have to meet somewhere else in July.
We'll definitely meet some else in July, yeah. We could meet in either town hall or my office. My office is CC.
You guys gonna be okay? Like, you know, withdrawals away from the building a little bit, or hanging it up?
If anybody's willing to take us in. We're working on a logistics, maybe because we do have to make sure, I mean, we have a ton of deliveries that come in.
That's actually the hardest part.
What we're going to do with that.
And is the fire suppression, that's all this this summer, and the windows are?
It's all, everything is this summer, having all the simultaneously.
Yeah, they're going to be having simultaneously.
So how does it affect like teachers and the libraries, or is it just pushing against one wall, like?
We are in the process of working our way through all of that, but we will be purchasing, I imagine, lots of tarts. You know, everything is basically going to need to be covered. You know, Steve's concerned about all of our technology with all the potential dust. So it's going to be a huge undertaking on lots of levels.
So when we all meet, it's, you know, us from our side, and the fire chief, and the building inspector, and, you know, the architects, and everybody's like got their dissection, and everybody has their hand in it, so there's all different kinds of scenarios being thrown out. And the project manager did mention at our last meeting that they've done some really large schools, I think one was in Bedford.
Yes.
And some of the projects actually going on during the school year, because the school's so large that they can't possibly get it done in the summer. So they have experience with really trying to make it, you know, not interruptive to the learning environment. So God forbid the project runs over, which it's not going to, you know, they are, they have the ability to make it work, so they can work third shift, and our students can still learn during the day. Obviously, they won't be good fire suppression system at that time, but, you know, things, they're prepared, I guess is the point that I'm trying to make.
A lot of logistics.
It's a lot.
It is. We meet monthly. As we get closer, I'm sure that we'll go back to the, probably every other week or every week meeting. So lots of people, everybody sort of comes out with different ideas, and, you know, hopefully, we're getting all of our questions asked and thinking it through. Again, the building won't be open for any activities at all.
Awesome, it's done.
It's going to be really awesome. It's going to be like a brand-new building, so we're really excited.
I know, and we're like all hyper-focused on it, and I go outside and look at it, and I'm like, God, we need this space, it looks so bad.
Yes.
Really, it is, yeah. It's going to be great when it's done.
That was all I had.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So before we adjourn for executive session, or to reopen the meeting to adjourn regular session, we have a couple of dates to remember. We have the holiday vacation coming up, so the last day of school before vacation is Friday the 22nd, so.
It's Sunday.
So, so we're on break from December 25th to January 1st, and then on the 2nd of January, school reopens. And there's a big boy next door, like school committee meeting.
It's on the 2nd.
It's on the 2nd. I just should have gone down online, sorry.
So, did you say that was a Tuesday?
Yes, Tuesday, because Monday is the Thursday.
Okay. Okay. So we'll have our meeting on a Tuesday, that instead of on Monday.
Yes.
And so at this time, I need a motion to be made to move. You have to hold for half a minute. Very uncomfortable, you need to get out of respect.
Actually, you know, if he doesn't need it, come to think of it, I might ask the other towns. Do you need that fact?
This one?
Yes. Do you mind if I keep it? I'm going to see if I can get the other towns to apply.
And the other?
It's not going to be wider, turning to the second.
The town, we stated. First of all, I move to adjourn to executive session. I don't know what they. Discuss the teacher's contract, pursuit of that general laws, chapter 30, A, section 21A, paragraph 30.
Second. Now you go, Tom, go. Oh, sorry. Okay.
Bye.
Bye. Have a nice day, everyone.
Thank you, thanks, Alex.